So with that, it looks like it's six uh six P M. So I'll call the West Richland City Council meeting for February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Remote meeting to order at six P M. And before we get started, I'll ask Stephanie to read our virtual ground rules and then call the roll.
All right, thank you. Please make sure the name shown at the bottom of your video view is the name you would like the mayor to use. You can change this by right clicking on the three dots in the upper right corner of your video view and clicking rename. If you have an unstable internet connection, please also connect through the phone. That will allow you to continue to participate, even if you lose internet connection. If you call in after you have joined on video, click the arrow between mute and video, and there is a button for switch to phone audio. Clicking this button provides a participant I D. Please call in with that I D as then your phone is associated with your video. We will mute everyone until a designated comment period. And when the mayor asks for public comments, if you raise your virtual hand, he will call on you and you will be unmuted. To virtually raise your hand, click on participants and then click on raise hand. If you are participating by phone only, press asterisk nine to raise your hand. All right, roll call. See, everybody is on, oh, we got a new Ken. Okay, right, Gary.
Here.
Richard Bloom.
Here.
Fred Brink.
Yeah.
David Fettum.
Here.
May Hayes.
Here.
Kate Moran. Is not unmuted either.
Present.
John Smart. Ken Stoker.
Here.
Hey, thank you, Stephanie. Appreciate it. Uh, I'm gonna ask Councilmember Stoker to lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening. And if we give uh Councilmember Stoker forgive every uh Stephanie, just a couple of seconds to mute everybody, I'll turn it over to you. Okay, Councilman, go ahead.
Okay, you hear me now? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Stoker. Much appreciated. Alrighty, council, we have the agenda before you this evening. Have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I move to.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A pose like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, council. This evening, we have uh Matt Rasmussen and Kyle Sullivan from Benton County with us this evening. Uh, the topics in which they're gonna talk to this evening are in relation to a crisis response team that's being stood up. And obviously, the homeless issue that we have throughout our region. Uh, these are things I believe are very close to a lot of council members and citizens' hearts. And uh, I can only uh say that I'm very, very happy that Benton County is is stepping up and taking the lead on this. In our city manager county administrator meetings, this has been a topic of discussion for quite some time. Uh, with some great headway being. And so with that, uh Matt, I thank you and also thank Kyle for joining us evening. And uh, whomever is gonna take the lead, I'll let you kick it off. Thanks for coming, gentlemen.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the introduction and thank you, council for having us. Uh, yeah. Like uh Mayor Gary said, we've had a lot of discussions in the city managers, county administrators meetings about things that are. The county is working on particularly surrounding uh the new one tenth uh percent sales tax that's being implemented this summer. And uh, we thought it'd be a good idea to go to the various city councils and just kind of give an update of where we are and what's going on. And what kind of partnerships that we'll be looking for as we move forward to have stand up some of these programs that are needed in the community. So I have a a real short slideshow that I'll use kind of as some talking points and Kyle fill in on the uh the parts that he has. So I'll share my screen here. Everybody see the uh slide slideshow there?
Uh, not yet. We've got uh. We've got your.
Matt, I think you selected the wrong window to share where we see your um.
You see my wrong.
Feel all your secrets, Matt.
Well. We don't want that. Just got my monitors got redone and I could share one and apparently screen one moved to the other side of my desk.
Yeah, you know how they might, you know how they might get you guys all right, Matt?
Yeah, all right. Can we see the right screen now?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
All right. So the first thing we wanted to, I wanted to update uh council on real quick and I think. Where the commissioners authorized the uh point one percent chemical dependency and mental health sales tax. They approved that on November ninth of last year uh with an effective date of July first of this year. And so that uh tax obviously is authorized under R C W eighty-two fourteen four sixty. Um, it applies to just about every purchase um that would be a uh regular sales and use taxes applied to. We estimate in Benton County, it should generate between five and six million dollars annually in revenue for programs. That can be done under uh this and that really extends to just about anything that has to do with substance use disorder or mental health treatment services. It can also be used to fund therapeutic courts, although we currently fund our therapeutic courts through the public safety sales tax. So we don't intend to change that. And actually, this sales tax does have some language uh that prohibits supplanting of existing funds. So we will continue to fund the therapeutic courts with the public safety sales tax and use these dollars more towards the behavioral health programs. Um, I think one thing should be noted is it can only be used for um the operation or delivery of these services. We cannot use these sales tax revenue dollars to do capital pro- programs. We can't build facilities. We can't uh, you know, buy, you can buy equipment for a program, but you can't just buy cars and things like that. So it's really driven to go into the community and get money into providing services to help people versus building. Things. Uh, it has to create new and expanded programs. So uh, again, like I said, can't supplant, so we won't be, anything that currently is going on will continue and we'll be looking to expand. Or or so or uh add on to those existing programs. And so that that's really it. I think that I didn't want to get too far into that. I just wanted everybody to know that that was coming. Uh, we'll see the sales tax go to eight point seven percent across all of Benton County. So it includes the rural areas and the incorporated areas. And that'll start on July first of this year. And then uh, we'll see the first revenue from that approximately two months later as the sales tax kind of fall about two months behind when they start. So first thing on the list that uh is the main driver behind the commissioners passing that sales tax is the Behavioral Health Crisis Recovery Center. So this is something that's been being discussed in the community for a very long time. Um, there's been various efforts to try to get something going. And in the last uh probably two years, we've made significant headway. Um, a lot of help from the Benton Franklin Recovery Coalition and and some other partners in the area. To create this facility that we're looking at something up to fifty beds. Now that'll include mental health and S U D in that fifty bed number. A lot of that will be driven by licensing and what we can actually get uh done. But the overall goal is to have a fifty bed facility. It is intended to be regional, so this is something that our goal is to have it not just be Benton County. There's a need in the entire region, and so we really want to partner with Franklin County and some of the other, and maybe even some of the other counties. Walla Walla has expressed some interest, mostly because of their Burbank area. They have some some services over in Walla Walla itself, but Burbank is a lot closer to the Tri-Cities than it is to Walla Walla, so they have some interest there. Um, and then really, anybody else who wants to partner in this, we're we're open to that. We recognize that the Tri-Cities is kind of a, is a hub for people all around us, even, you know, down into Oregon and up towards Yakima. That people do come this way for a lot of services that they need because they're just not offered out there. The facility is operated under what we call a no wrong door model. So that basically means we would not turn anyone away, um, no matter what the condition they come in unless it's a, you know, a medical. Emergency that they go to the hospital, that would be about the only time we'd have to send them somewhere else. But we take them no matter what, uh, no matter whether they have ability to pay or insurance. That's what the the facility, that's the kind of facility we need here. I I think we have some providers in town currently that they tend to be a little more picky on. Who they take in for various reasons. Uh, but what we really need is someplace where our law enforcement officers, our fire paramedics. Or uh, the mobile crisis teams that we'll discuss here in a few minutes can take people who they find on the street. Or have a call into emergency services and bring them there and get them stabilized. And then the facility, its goal is to have them be short term stays. So we get them stabilized from their immediate crisis and then refer them out to other providers for longer term treatment. So we're really the first stop for people who are suffering from mental health or substance use disorder crisis to try to get them stabilized. And get them into a long term treatment plan. Um, currently, we're in negotiations with LifePoint Health, who is the larger company who bought Lords and Trios Health. Um, looking at trying to purchase the old Kennewick General Hospital facility down there on Auburn Street downtown Kennewick. It's currently the uh Trios Women and Children's Center, but they plan to move those programs out of that building. I, as I understand it, it should be this summer that they're doing that. They accelerated their schedule. And so um, that's a hundred and ninety-three thousand square foot facility. And so we only need about forty-five thousand square feet to get this uh, the proposed fifty bed facility. So we'll also be looking at complimentary services that go there. There's a lot of discussion around transitional housing. And uh, maybe a homeless shelter if we need to have something down there uh to satisfy some of the new languages coming out in the statutes. But we'll be looking at what to do with the remaining square footage and as a benefit and continued benefit to behavioral health programs. So right now, we have a, we've been seeking a lot of grants and funding from the state. We have uh two point seven million secured in design funds and an additional one million dollar in grant funds for construction. I have probably three other grant applications out there pending for various dollar amounts that we're waiting to hear back on. Uh, we're also working very hard at the federal level to see if we can get some funding there. We've, we've hired a lobbyist over in Washington, D C and they're, they're out pounding the streets for us, looking for programs and and special appropriations at the federal level. Uh, in in today, in addition to that, the Board of County Commissioners um authorized staff to utilize up to five million dollars of our. Funds from the American Rescue Plan Act. Putting that towards the construction of this facility to help get us closer to our goal. The twenty million dollars is the total estimate cost. And as we've explained, we're, we probably about eight million dollars is what we currently have secured. So we're looking for some partnerships and grants and things to get that other twelve million dollars. If we can uh get a, get to the point of where we feel comfortable that we're going to have the money. We're gonna probably build this under the progressive design build model, which is what you all used for your uh, your new police station, which is a beautiful building. And uh, we really like the uh model Roscoe has shared with us and Mayor Gary. Uh, it seems like a great opportunity to get this project moving and get it done a whole lot faster. So the next part of uh what we're working on in regards to behavioral health is a behavioral health advisory committee. So one of the things our commissioners wanted when we passed this new uh sales tax was for. The uh expenditures that are come from that revenue to be driven by the community. We want to have people who are experts in the field or who are directly impacted by behavioral health issues. Guiding the commissioners on what programs and things should be funded with this one tenth sales tax. So obviously, the recovery center is already one that we've decided to do that, but we expect that there will be revenue beyond. What is needed to operate the recovery center, and so we want to have a good panel of people giving us advice on what we should be doing. So it'll be community centered, uh representatives from mental health and substance use disorder, so experts in those fields. Uh, persons with lived experience are frequently called peers. Um, would it be included in that? Uh, representatives from the local hospitals, law enforcement and the emergency medical responders. And then we would have some non-voting members who are there for supportive roles to provide information. It'd be the county managers who can talk about what financial resources are available for the programs they're looking at. Benton Franklin Health District, the Therapeutic Courts and the Benton Franklin Recovery Coalition. Membership structure is there on the screen. We're looking at thirteen voting members, seven non-voting members. And we're having a by county meeting on February twenty-third of this month with Franklin County. Need to discuss a uh, the formations. We have some documents drawn up that we're proposing for how that would look. And hopefully, we can get the two boards of commissioners to agree on a path and get this uh advisory committee together. Because they're gonna, our goal is that they would be the ones guiding the decisions about the uh programs that we're trying to put in place. And the last, uh, another next one we're, wanted to touch on is uh what's called mobile crisis response teams. And so we've had a couple of uh, we had, started out with Chief Bob Gear. Here and a few of the other police chiefs who said, hey, we really want to start looking at having an option for us. Because with the changes in the um, the police reform laws, it put them in a bind as far as how they were able to spot, respond to people in. Crisis and a lot of those calls ended up going to the fire departments and the emergency medical responders. And so we got a group, a small group together and started out with and started having discussions about how this could play out. Um, I had been personally and Kyle has gone also, and we've looked at different models around the country as far as what other states are doing. That are, that are leaders in behavioral health. And so we saw that they, these mobile crisis teams, which are not law enforcement or firefighters. Um, are a really good model who can deal with a lot of these uh, the calls that come into our nine-one-one center for people experiencing pri- crisis. Uh, so these would be a team made up of a clinician. Um, and then probably a peer is the model that we would propose. That seems to be a nationwide, nationwide accepted model. And they would be in an on mark vehicle and they would go and respond to these calls. Um, what we've seen from the states that are doing this is that sixty to seventy percent of those calls can be resolved in the field without transporting. The person who they're contacting in crisis. So that means that we have sixty, even seventy percent less people ending up in our jail or in our hospital emergency rooms. At least until we have a recovery center, which then if the people couldn't be stabilized in the field, they would be transported to the recovery center instead of one of those other two places. And so that's a big number. You know, I don't, I don't have a good handle on how many calls we get for those types of crises. Although I am meeting with B C S next week and probably will get a better idea of that. Cause we're trying to see if they would be interested in uh helping with the dispatching of these teams, because those calls are going to nine-one-one. But uh, sixty for seventy percent less of those people having to end up in the emergency room or jail is, is a big benefit. Until we can get that recovery center going. So I think the group that we've had meeting is and. Uh, we're all in consensus that we don't want to wait. We want to get this going now. And then eventually, when the recovery center opens, these teams will be rolled into the operation of that. Some, a lot of the providers we've talked to have said it really makes a lot of sense to have the recover or the mobile crisis teams be part of the recovery center. They can use the, the staff from both sides to supplant one side or the other when they're uh, when they're busy. This also is prefer, proposed to be a uh, a regional program. So it would not just be Benton County, we include across the river and potentially into Burbank, but a lot of that depends on who wants to participate. Benton County is gonna move this forward with whoever wants to come and and uh be a part of that and partner up on that. Uh, next one is Health and Human Services and the programs we're working on there, so I will let Kyle discuss that, because that's his thing.
All right, uh, are you able to hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, we got you. Great. Okay, great. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to come in and talk about uh some of the programs that are offered uh through my office. Um, yeah, and I think uh maybe just as a, as a plug for maybe a, a future, future invite. Um, I, I won't be able to talk about all of the housing programs that my office offers, um, just simply from a, a time. I don't want to take too much time, um, but I would be more than happy uh to come back at a, at a later date and and go a little bit more in detail about. Uh, the housing programs, how they're funded, what we, you know, the number of people that we see, those kinds of things. Um, that's actually something that I'm gonna do. I'm gonna, next week, uh, Matt and I are presenting uh in Kennewick. And then a month later, I'm gonna go back and talk about uh more specific housing programs. Um, but, but the programs uh that I'm here to talk with you about uh today. Uh, uh, my office oversees uh the Veterans Relief Fund for both Ben and Franklin Counties. Uh, prior to COVID uh, shutting everything down, uh, the advisory boards uh, uh, for both of those funds. Uh, had talked about um, using those funds to uh create and help pay for a veteran service officer. Uh, veteran service officers is an individual who helps uh vets access federal funds. Uh, with disabilities and and file claims and and those kinds of things. Uh, there's gonna be a uh discussion, further discussion uh regarding that at the uh by county meeting uh here next week. Um, so the Housing Resource Center, uh, back in two thousand fourteen, uh, the state uh. Their funding, the funding that we get for housing um, had additional requirements put in place. Uh, prior to two thousand fourteen, if somebody was experiencing a housing crisis. Uh, they had to go around to each housing provider, ask if there was uh funding available. Uh, answer very, very many of the same questions of uh, and, and it was a long arduous process. Uh, uh, the, the, as uh, response to that. Uh, they wanted to, Commerce wanted to centralize uh, kind of the, the question asking part of it, the evaluation. So that's something my office does. That's the Housing Resource Center. Some of you may have heard of it as coordinated entry. It's, it's the same thing. Uh, and so it's a single point of contact for somebody who's experiencing a housing uh crisis. And uh, we, we screen them. We've, we've uh, you know, as, as with most social services, the, the need. Uh, outweighs the, the available resources. And so uh, this is uh, we have a screening tool that we prioritize. Uh, a person based off of a number of things and then we can make referrals to the different housing. Uh, different housing programs that either internally or at one of the agencies. Uh, next, next topic, I, I just wanted to touch base on uh rental assistance, uh COVID and the COVID response. And so, you know, over the course of the last, uh, well, since March of two thousand twenty, uh, since everything. COVID shut us all down, uh, my office is in, has had an additional fifty-two million dollars. Uh, with the vast majority of that being rent, being rental and utility assistance. I think it was uh, um, I don't have, actually have the breakdown in front of me. I think it's roughly in the low forties to mid forty millions. Uh, in rental and utility assistance. And so um, we had worked with uh the Superior Courts, Legal Aid. Uh, dispute resolution center, Northwest Justice and a number of attorneys. We had to develop a process for individuals. Uh, once the uh eviction moratorium ended. And, and the, I think the benefit to this program is, I think the, the eviction moratorium. Um, took the, the tenants' um concerns, uh, you know, with being. Evicted into consideration, but it didn't do a whole lot for the landlords. And so uh, the, the benefit for this is, is uh, you know, we have the ability to, to. Uh, with the funding to make both the, the tenants and the landlords whole. We have, I know, um, you know, there, uh, I think it was the Benton P U D. Uh, at one point had almost, it was over a million dollars in delinquent. Utility bills that hadn't been paid, uh, and so those, we have the ability to catch, catch people up. Uh, with those that, you know, preventing they meet uh program requirements. Um, the, the other, we had received additional funding um as. Oh, it's, it's, it's COVID funding, but it's, it's in uh relation to uh addressing homeless. And so we've, we've been able to do some things with our homeless population in terms of, of funding and placement that um historically we don't have. We simply don't have the funding to do. Uh, and, and so um, I'll talk here in a second about. Uh, you know, some of the, the responses that we'll be trying to do uh moving forward. Uh, wanted to talk about point time count. Uh, it's a, a single day in, in the year. Commerce determines which day that is that we, we go out and count homeless. We have volunteers uh from different agencies that assist. Uh, my staff go out into the community. Uh, it's typically the, the last week of January. Uh, but we'd had that recent spike in, in the uh, in COVID and so they, they postponed it. Uh, uh, a month, and so it's uh next Thursday. So we'll be out in the community, uh, my staff and, and uh, uh, again, volunteers counting the homeless. Uh, funding a lot of times uh will uh, yeah, in part uh be. Reference to the, the point in time counts is our ability to count the homeless population, both sheltered and unsheltered in the community. Uh, the last bullet that I wanted to talk about, it's, it's something um that I think will be helpful. Um, and I've been working with county admin, with uh, uh, our H R department. Um, you know, a lot of the, the push, and again, I, I think um COVID uh certainly hasn't helped. Uh, our, the homeless situation or the people experiencing housing crisis. I, I think you also factor in um. You know, that for, there's just simply not any affordable housing. Uh, our, our vacancy rates hovers around one percent. And so, you know, we're seeing people, more people experiencing housing crashes, crisis. Um, I'm, I'm trying to develop an outreach coordinator. My hope is that that'll happen soon. Uh, the intent is uh for local law enforcement, code enforcement, uh, city officials. Um, anybody that, that may come in contact with homeless person will have this person's uh cell phone number. They give that person a call and if they're not with, uh, currently with a, a, with someone who's uh experiencing a housing crisis. They can, they can go out into the community, interact with the person, help, help get them out of that situation and, and uh into. The beginnings of, of stable housing. Uh, and so I think that's, that's all I have. And again, like I said, we, we have a number of housing programs that are, are. Supported with document recording fees with federal and state funds. And um, you know, if there's ever a time you'd like me to come back and, and give a, a, a deeper presentation, a more involved presentation, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you, Kyle. Thank you, Matt. Uh, yeah, Kyle, I, I got a little footnote on my agenda. And we'll uh, we'll ring you back up and have you, have you come join us again at a later date.
Mayor, I did have one more slide that is not related to behavioral health, but I thought I would just take an opportunity to update the council while we were here.
Sure, absolutely.
The, the county's been working on also is our, a master plan for our fairgrounds. It's something that uh, that we've needed to invest some money out there into the fairgrounds for quite some time. And so uh, we have a, a, a good opportunity here uh with some funding available for economic development projects. And so we've hired Johnson Consulting Group to help us look at the current use of the fairgrounds and what some uh. Operate or some options might be to um expand that and make it into more of a year round facility. We do get some small uses of it when the fair's not there, but the fair is the, the main. Uh, the main driver, they, they're the ones who use it the most. Um, so we're trying to look at some options there. Uh, we want to develop the, or improve the existing grounds. Uh, and we know some buildings need to be updated, but we also want to look at what the community is looking for as far as what the buildings are out there. And see if there's things that are something that we could build that would provide a, a more useful facility in the community during uh the rest of the time of year. When the fair's not there. And we do have quite a bit of unused area to the east. Our, our total site is a hundred and seventy acres, but currently we only use about seventy percent of that. And a large portion of that seventy percent is the big parking lot in the front. So, so there's a lot of space that's available on the fairgrounds that we could put to better use than sagebrush and tumbleweeds. Uh, so some options we're looking at are outdoor sports fields. I, I know there's been some studies done by Visit Tri-Cities in the last few years that show there's a tremendous need for additional outdoor sports fields. Uh, indoor sports, um, if we could get the funding for a larger indoor facility, that's something that we would be looking at. So like basketball, volleyball. I don't think we're looking at hockey, although that is an identified need in the Visit Tri-Cities, but it's just something that we might. And that also an indoor sports type uh facility could double as a large convention type space. If uh, for uh, an additional space like that to complement the uh Happo Center and the uh Toyota Center. Uh, we want to revise the rodeo arena. The uh, the arena that's currently there is obviously pretty old. And the rodeo is a important and big event for the fair. And so we're looking at some options there to update that rodeo arena and provide a, a good space to complement the event that the fair puts on every year. That's a big draw for everybody. And just some other things that have been proposed by the consultant that we're still considering. They have some additional park like spaces. So with some walking paths and things like that and, and mountain biking facilities. So we're considering all options on the table. We've had a, a couple of meetings with them that have gone well. Um, and we're really now just getting into the, starting to narrow down what might be uh, what might be the use out there. The county is looking at least in the next probably two years to invest at least ten million dollars in this to start. And then we'll develop some of these options. It's kind of a phased approach. It wouldn't. And then we'll develop some of these options. It's kind of a phased approach. It wouldn't be a one-shot deal. We implement some portions of it and then kind of go along. And we, we think it's a great opportunity to redevelop that grounds and it'll be a tremendous draw for part of Kennewick and really for the whole county. So that's just one other thing that we're working on that I thought would be good to share with the council. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
All right. That's good information on the fairgrounds, Matt. Much appreciated. That's, that's some, that's a need. We, we need indoor, indoor sports and outdoor, more, more outdoor stuff. That's, it's cool. Thanks for sharing that with me. I'll send you the bill for that pitch because that wasn't part of the package that I got you in. Council member Bloom, you have your hand up.
Yeah, since I seem to be the expert on what one percent of, one tenth of a percent sales tax. I think your five million dollars a little short this year. You'll, you'll be getting six to seven if you actually include Franklin, be closer to ten million a year. What, what is the budget going to be for this mental health facility operating budget? I mean, what do you foresee? That's, that's quite a bit of money. And there are other resources to pay for that. So, so there are going to be limitations on what that can be spent on, correct?
Yeah, there are, there are limitations on what that money can be spent on, but there is a lot of programs out there that fall into the category of allowable expenses. And so I don't have the exact numbers of what the operational cost will be because it's going to depend on the provider we select and the services that we want them to provide. But some of the facilities that are of similar size that we've looked at, the, the cost to their, to the, the agency that runs it, because they, they won't tell us what it actually costs, but they'll tell us what they charge the agency because they get to, they get to bill a lot of this stuff to Medicare, Medicaid, private insurance and things like that. But they're, they're around three million a year to operate a facility like that, the cost to the agency. And so that, that's what we're anticipating. Obviously, that'll, that'll change. There are grants available that we can go for to, to, you know, take some of that out of the one percent and use those dollars somewhere else, but that's about what.
Well, just, I mean, you know, from my, my connection with Ben Franklin Transit, it's a feast or famine. I've been through both feast and famine. And right now it's a feast time. I mean, I mean, all the communities are getting twenty percent extra sales tax because people are spending lots more money. And unfortunately, they're having to spend more money. But that will go away in the long run. So just the question, what's it going to be used for and that type of stuff? It's, it's, it's a tough one to budget for.
Yeah, we agree. What we probably anticipate is something similar to our public safety sales tax program where we would have contracts with the different providers that we wanted to support. That would be, you know, a couple of years in nature so that if we did run into the famine times, we have the ability to scale back a little bit and still offer what, you know, we'll have to figure out what are the basic services that we want to have, you know, what is the focus and make sure that we can always support those costs. And then if there are those feast times, we can expand and do some additional programs.
Perfect. Mayor Pro Tim Brink.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Rastmussen, I appreciate the time you took to deliver the presentation this evening. One question for you, Mr. Sullivan. You mentioned February twenty-fourth is going to be the point in time homeless population count. Do you feel that that count is going to be accurate enough one day of the year to form the basis for determining what the approximate homeless population is? I mean, I'd be a little bit concerned perhaps about seasonal variations and other concerns or your comments, please.
Yeah, the, the, you know, and again, the point in time count is a flawed count. You know, it's, I think ideally, it would be held probably quarterly, four times, four times a year. I think what we found, you know, they always, they always run it in the middle of the winter too. There was, there was one year we did it and we had a really bad snow. There was three feet of snow out on the ground and homeless people are resourceful. And so you, you go out into the community and, and they're going to, they're going to get out of the snow. And, and so I, the general, you know, I think part of the problem is that when we, when we talk about the homeless definition, different entities have a different definition. You know, we go off of what HUD's definition is. There's the McKinney Vento. And, and so there's, there's, it, it's a, it's more of a starting point. I think the, the, the general rule of thumb is that you take the point in time count and times it by three. And that's usually a little bit more accurate at that time. You know, the, the, you know, it's, it's, it's something to start with. But, but, but the, the, the homeless population will be far greater than what the point in time count number saves.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, you and others were sensitive to those, to those facts. Just one other question. Mr. Rastmussen, we have the Benton County Law and Justice Council, which has tackled, at least in notional terms, some of the issues you've discussed today and some of the initiatives. Is there any, do you anticipate any involvement with the Benton County Law and Justice Council on this?
Uh, our, the commissioners haven't indicated that they wanted to do that. So it's really, you know, right now I don't think so. They're, we're going to be actually getting them back together and having them get involved in the upcoming renewal for the public safety sales tax. So they're going to have a lot to work on with that. But I don't, I, I think it's kind of one of those that if the community thinks that's important, then the commission, they would need to talk to the commissioners. And I can certainly ask that question of them and see what their response is.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Brink. Council member Morant.
Thank you very much. And thank you both for being here. I am glad that Mayor Pro Tim Brink asked one of the questions I was wondering about. So another question I was wondering about is for the V S O position, the Veteran Service Organization Officer, rather, position that you're talking about. Would this be, would you be working with the current V S O that the Department of Veterans Affairs currently has for this area, which is the Vietnam Veterans of America? Would it just be, and also, so that it would be the both? Or has there been any discussion with the Vietnam Veterans of America and how they work with the local veterans as a V S O? Because currently we only have them as the only one.
Yeah, and, and right now, that, the, the Veteran Service Officer position hasn't been approved. Steve Gill, who works for the Washington, Washington W D V A, or the W D V A, Washington Department of Veterans Affairs, is coming on to the By County meeting to provide a presentation on the benefits of, of a county-funded V S O. And he, it, so prior to COVID, I think everything shut down in March. In December of nineteen, I, I was a little bit on the fence with, you know, I'd heard the Benton County Advisory Board had talked about the county-funded V S O. We hadn't really been able to have a chance to talk too much about it with the Franklin County Board. But Benton County Advisory Board had, had made arrangements for Mr. Gill to come down. He presented to a number of us. And, and he's very convincing. He comes with numbers. He comes with, with the benefits of the, of the position and, and, you know, and not only does it help the veterans, but it helps, helps local economies because it brings federal dollars to, to, to our communities. And so his, the, the purpose of the, the meeting next week is for him to be able to present to, to both boards, both, both Ben and Franklin County Boards of Commissioners can hear the same thing, ask the same questions. And then a decision, I believe, at that point will be made whether or not we move forward with a Veteran Service Officer. And, and that position would be funded, you know, if, if both boards agree or that, that position can be funded through the Veterans Relief Fund. I don't know if I, I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, well, and I'm just hoping that it would be something, it would be a and also, rather than just a replacement. Because there is a lot of need locally for V S Os. I'm hoping that we aren't going to continue to be just limited to one because we, like I said, we have a lot of need for V S O around here and it would be great to have both. So that Ron and his group over with the Vietnam vets would have some, some help with the caseload as it is.
Yes, yes. And, and it would, it would be an end also, you know, and I know there has been some conversation about, you know, whether or not each county wanted to have, wanted to fund their own. I think, you know, and my recommendation to the board will be, you know, let's, let's get a position, let's fund it through, let's see what the impact to the relief fund is. And, and then in a year or two, we come back to both boards with numbers and present on the successes. Or if there are, are, are issues that we need to address, we do it, you know, we do it on, on the way. But, but it, it's, it's not in place of it would be an also. I agree. The, the need is, the need is really high.
Yes, excellent. Thank you.
Uh, council member Smart.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kyle, Matt, thanks for your presentations. My first question is for Matt. Excuse me. Can you, I, I guess you indicated there's a mobile crisis response team plan. And then it would eventually be integrated into the recovery center. Are those two things both funded through the same means through this point one percent? Is that the intention? Or is there some additional funding that supports those proposed activities?
So the, the intent is they would be funded through the point one percent, but there are also grant programs out there. I, I got notice of one recently that's coming out specifically for mobile crisis teams. And so we'd be using the point one percent is that if nothing else, we have the money through this to fund that. But we're going to look for opportunities to, to, to make sure those programs are as big and successful as they need to be.
So I think one thing, if I could, one thing I'd also like to add to that, you know, there, there will be many of the clients that the mobile outreach team is, is dispatched to. You know, that, that would be a Medicaid eligible expense. You know, obviously, when you're paying for a twenty-four hour, seven day a week service, you, you don't have all of these billable hours that they could bill Medicaid. But when they come in contact with a, a client that has Medicaid, that, you know, the, the, the time that they spend with that client can be billed to Medicaid. And so the, the, you know, there will be a cost that it's Medicaid will fund its portion of it for the services that are provided during the time that, you know, we'll have to cover the, some of the downtime though too. To provide for the, the access to the service.
So you indicated that there are sixty to seventy percent of the calls might, that might have gone to, I suppose, the hospital or jail, maybe handled by this process. And possibly, I presume, either eventually go to the recovery center or maybe don't have to go anywhere. Is that, is that right? I mean, because the crisis response teams would somehow mitigate the situation on their response and at the person's home or location. Is that the idea?
Yeah, so the sixty to seventy percent is the number of those calls that they resolve of the person where they contact them. So at their home or on the street, they're able to stabilize them. And then maybe, and, you know, get them what they need so they're back to feeling better and then work with them to refer them to necessary services. And so, yeah, that, that number is the number of people who would no longer need to be transported anywhere.
And I, I can tell you that, that, that number will be high. They, I managed the crisis unit when the county still operated it back in, that we, the county quit providing crisis services back in two thousand sixteen. That year, we had about three, three hundred and twenty, three hundred and thirty detentions. And, and of the people that we, that we did face-to-face contacts with, we only detained about eight or nine percent. So, so you times that three hundred and seventy, you know, by, you know, add another ninety percent to that. And, and, but the vast majority of them started out in an emergency room. That's kind of been the standard practice is law enforcement gets called to all of these calls or EMS. They transport them to the E R. A person gets medically cleared, really, whether, whether they need to or not. And, and then the crisis unit is called to go out and evaluate. And again, ninety percent of those calls, ninety-plus percent ended up with that person with a safety plan being developed and that person returning home. And that's, that's not including the, the calls where, where law enforcement, there wasn't, you know, they, they would call them the nuisance calls where they would put somebody because of one reason or other disposition. There wasn't a, a great disposition, take them to the jail for, you know, criminal trespass, you know, those kinds of things. So I, I think the savings in the hospitals, in the jails, with law enforcement response time. And if you, if we can, are able to quantify that over a five-year period is going to be huge.
Yeah, so it sounds like a relief to our law enforcement operation. So you answered my next question, kind of. I was going to ask, I know you said you don't know how many such calls you would have, but you just gave a good example of what it was like in two thousand sixteen. So would that be, so, you know, we can project that ahead and growth and so forth. And that would give us some concept of what the number of calls might be when this program starts. Unless there's something else in addition. I mean, would that be a one-for-one? Were those the same type of calls that you're proposing to respond in, in the future?
I think those are the same kinds of calls. Obviously, when, when there, you know, the vast majority of those, there wasn't safety issues, a violence issue, you know, law enforcement will still need to be called if, if there's concern for violence or, or, you know, some aggression. But the, you know, and again, I think this last year is probably, I think that number would be drastically smaller because of House Bill thirteen-ten, which affected law enforcement's ability to, to respond and be involved in the transporting part of this. But that, that I think the legislature is going to, going to write that issue. And so I think it will, you know, the numbers will go back to more what they have been previously.
So how many, with this plan that you have, how many mobile crisis response teams do you think you would be operating?
I think the, the models that we've looked at show that we would need four or five to serve the region.
Okay.
Forty-five, twenty-four hour a day, seven day a week coverage.
Okay. And that's, and those folks are in unmarked cars?
Yeah, that, that's the preferred model is they're not in a, in a marked vehicle, marked car. They're not wearing uniforms. It, it seems to make people a lot more comfortable when they get out of the vehicle, that they're just there to talk to them. So.
Okay, so I'll try to wrap this up. I'm taking up time, I know. Sorry, council. But on, on the next topic of housing programs, you indicated that there was fifty-two million dollars being distributed plus twenty-four million, rough numbers for homeless. Is that, was that for the two-year period from twenty through, well, up to now? Or what was that period of time? Was that a one-year allotment?
No, no. And so, so, and I've got, I don't have the number of, the number of grants. I've probably had, you know, I'm ballparking maybe seven to ten additional grants. And they had varying start times and end times. The, the, the funding first started March of two thousand twenty. And so I've got, you know, some of those grants. And, you know, again, it's, it's fifty-two million and of the fifty-two million as of January, twenty-four million have been expended. And so I've got funding, you know, some of the, some of the grants have been fully expended and the end dates closed. But I've got funding that is contracted out until September of two thousand twenty-five.
Oh, so the, so the fifty-two million, it, it hasn't all been spent, just twenty-four has been used to date? Is that what you're saying? Okay, rough numbers.
Yeah.
And then how many, how many clients does that equate to roughly?
Oh, I don't know that I, I don't know that I have a number. I know, I know. So just, here's a small sample. And so my staff have been very, very backed up with the workload. They, they each have, you know, stacks of applications on their desk. Got to the point to where, you know, we were running into problems. We prioritize referrals from the dispute resolution center because those are, those are ones that are facing eviction. And so, but we were, we were backed up in, in responding to the, the applications, you know, upwards of six weeks. And so we contract some of the dollars out to Goodwill Industries and they've been a fantastic partner. And so I, I wanted to let my staff And so I, I wanted to let my staff, um, try and get caught up. And so for two weeks, uh, we, we just collected the applications and I took them to, uh, we turned, we took them over to Goodwill. We had a conversation. They, they said they'd be able to process them. During that two-week period, we had about five hundred applications that we took over. So it's a, um, it's a staggering number of applications that we've been processing and that we still have to process.
And so you normally pay somebody's complete rent? I mean, if they, if you meet their conditions, do you, uh?
Yeah, yeah, if. Yeah. And so.
That we're giving each, uh, each client.
It really varies. It really varies. Um, you know, we can, we can go back, uh, fifteen months. Uh, and, um, with, uh, uh, you know, if the person's unemployed, uh, we can go back fifteen months and go three months forward. Obviously with utilities, we can't, you know, we can't pay any forward. Um, you know, we've seen people that have, that have been out of work for three months and are behind on rent too. Um, and we've seen people that have, um, you know, not, not been able to pay their rent for fifteen months. Um, you know, we see, we see the whole, the whole gambit. Uh, we can't pay, uh, uh, so if fair market rent is determined by HUD and, uh, we can play, we can pay up, up to a hundred and fifty percent of fair market rent. Um, problem with fair market rent in our, in our market is that, um, you know, again, our, our vacancy rates hovers around in Benton and Franklin County hovers at around one percent. So people that don't have barriers to housing have difficulty finding affordable housing. And so, um, once the, the eviction moratorium ended, landlords were able to increase rent. And, and so what we're finding is that it's difficult to find rent now within fair market. Uh, what HUD determines fair market. And so the, uh, the ability to pay a hundred and fifty percent of the fair market rent has been helpful because, um, there, there are, there are, are some people that, uh, we catch them completely up in rent. You know, there are things that we can't, we can't pay for, you know, a pet deposit, you know, those kinds of things, you know, that, that kind of stuff. But there are other people that if their rent is higher than what we can pay, you know, we pay, uh, what, what we're allowed to, and then they're responsible for the remainder of it. And then of course utilities.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Standard that you use, uh, is a national published standard to determine who qualifies for this service or this money?
Yeah, it's, it's. I'm sorry. Could you repeat the question? I didn't hear that totally.
Is there a national standard of metrics you use to judge persons' need and their qualifications? Or is that just determined locally? And then how?
No, we. Yeah. And we're required to, you know, and so we, we received funding from both the Treasury Department and Commerce as part of the, the federal package for, uh, rental assistance. And so, uh, there are, um, uh, guidelines that they've provided to us that we, that we have to comply with. And so a lot of that's based on income. Um, each funding source has, there's a little, little bit of a variation, um, in, in, um, several of them. They had to be able to, we had, there had to be, um, documented evidence that, uh, they, that it was, uh, as a result of COVID. So you have, for example, you have a, a restaurant worker that, um, when everything shut down and they lost their job, um, they weren't able to pay their rent. And so they were, so, um, some of the future funding, um, has taken, taken that, that requirement out. And they just assume that if you, if you, uh, meet income requirements and you, um, in, in that it, you were behind on rent during this period of COVID, that you were affected by COVID. Um, and so, um.
So my, my last question, uh, uh, is there a, um, is the, is the distribution of these funds a matter of public record?
Um, yeah, it, well, I guess, well, I mean, everything we do is public record. I, I think I, I from, I don't think I would be able to provide names. Um, I think, uh, um, I think in terms of dollar amounts, I, I, I wouldn't have any issue with that. I, I think, um, um.
Proper action, proper redaction to protect the individuals that are applicants.
I didn't. Yeah.
Okay. Very good.
Appreciate all that. Thank you very much, sir, for so many questions, but I find this very helpful and I appreciate you guys' presentation.
Yeah. Kyle and Matt, very good presentation, good questions, counsel. And, uh, uh, as I said before, this is something that we've been working on for a while. Matt, again, I appreciate the county taking the ball and making it happen. Kyle, for everything that you do, uh, these, they're definitely services that are needed in our community. Long ago as well as in the future that we've got coming, because, uh, you know, the, the West Side's coming our way. We had to be ready for it, right? So, okay, guys, thank you very much. I appreciate your time. And then, uh, we'll go ahead and continue on with our meeting. If you want to hang out, you're more than welcome to. Otherwise we'll cut you loose and, uh, you go get dinner.
Thank you, Mayor. Sounds good.
Good. Thanks, counsel. Have a great evening. I'm going to go home and eat.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Okay, counsel, the, uh, consent agenda is before you this evening, which includes payment of the bills, approves amendments to the regular meeting from February first, two thousand and twenty-two. The resolution ten twenty-two to authorize the mayor to execute interlocal agreement with the cities of Richland, Kennewick and Pasco for regional cyanobacteria, cyanobacteria management. That's a mouthful. Uh, and then, uh, with that, is there anyone from the audience who would like to speak to the consent agenda this evening? If so, raise your virtual hand or star nine if you're by phone. Stephanie, I do not see anyone. Do you?
I do not.
Okay, perfect. Uh, so with that, may I have a motion to bring the consent agenda this evening?
I move. Nope, second.
Motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
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 The pose like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. This is our first opportunity for citizen public comment for items that are not on the agenda this evening. If there's anyone that would like to address counsel for non-agenda items, please raise your hand and Stephanie will recognize you. And I see Gail has got her hand up. Stephanie? Go ahead, Gail. Oh, we gotta get you unmuted here.
Um, I, I guess, Gail Brown, forty-four oh five, Chelan Drive. Um, I have a question. I have some concerns and I guess I have some comments. I, I saw, uh, to let you know, little blurb on the city's webpage that the Arlington, Chelan, this, this triangle, um, that the, the project was pulled because the materials got, got more expensive. And I have some real concerns about that. If that is the case and, and there's some questions, if it is, why is it? So, um, you know, if you want to say yes or no.
Well, you know, the routine, Gail. As soon as we get to the end of comments, uh, with staff and counsel, I'll, uh, go ahead and, and let Roscoe, uh, address that as well.
Do, do I get to speak again then?
At the end of, we have a public comment session at the end. Now, if you'd like to reach out to Mr. Slade, he's always willing to talk to citizens.
I'd really like this on the record actually. So, um, you know, I can, if he wants to answer, you know, do a staff report later, that's fine, but.
Yeah. Not a problem. Everything will be on the record. So he'll address, he'll address the concern which you brought forth.
And thanks.
You're welcome. And I see no one else. So with that, we're going to go ahead and move on to ordinances, resolutions, motions and public hearings. Item A, A and B are a public hearing on a proposed frontage improvement waiver for fifty-eight twenty-six Van Geesten. And the resolution granting it, uh, will have Public Works Director, Mr. Slade, staff report.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Counsel, what you have before you is a fringe improvement, a roadway fringe improvement waiver for fifty-eight twenty-six West Van Geesten. Uh, more commonly known as the old Moose Lodge building there on Van Geesten. Uh, the property owners come in for a building permit for a remodel to that thing. And as such, it's, uh, more than fifty percent of the existing structure's value. So it doesn't meet the exemption for frontage improvements. Uh, the applicant understands that the, the state has secured twenty-six million dollars for the Van Geesten uh, corridor there across the frontage of this to improve, do these frontage improvements. And so they, they petitioned, uh, back in January for a waiver not to do improvements along the front of their property on Van Geesten. The waiver does not include Desert View, Frontage or Deer Street. They will still be doing those improvements as required by our municipal code. Counsel adopted a resolution back on, uh, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, uh, resolution five dash twenty-two that set tonight as the public hearing date to have a discussion on this frontage waiver. Uh, notices were sent out to within six hundred feet of the property. Uh, they were posted and the property was also posted per, uh, ordinance on this. In your staff report has, uh, the copy of the notice has a vicinity map, uh, shows you the improvements. Uh, staffs reviewed this and is recommending, uh, granting the frontage waiver to Van Geesten with two conditions. Uh, one is that the four properties that make up that, uh, the Moose Lodge be combined. Uh, the property owner is, is already in the process of doing that. There's a property line that goes through the existing building. So this will clean up some of that. There's also some road right away at Desert View. That, well, the road doesn't follow the road right away. Let's just put it that way with Desert View. The property owner and staff's aware of that. And so that will be a separate, uh, process that will come to council in the future for a road right away vacation. They will be dedicating, uh, right away for Desert View where it turns and ties into, uh, Deer Street. So that's all part of the, uh, thing. So the, again, the, the two conditions is to combine it into four properties. And the other one is limiting the access to a single thirty-five foot wide access. In the packet, you'll see what their site plan shows a single access. Uh, this is consistent with the city's and the state DOT's, uh, access standards. Um, and so they're just making it clear, this is where your access is going to be as we go through and work with DOT for the design of the, uh, SR two-two-four Red Mountain Transportation Improvement Project. Uh, we did receive some public comment that I believe was emailed out to counsel. And to, uh, Stephanie, um, just want to remind the public that they need to go to the city clerk. Um, if they want to send it to council, that's great. Um, but if they just send it to council, there's a good chance that staff and the city clerk doesn't get it and it doesn't get into the meeting. So, um, I think, uh, Councilmember Moran, thank you for forwarding the one that did not make it to the city clerk. Um, otherwise we would have missed it, but I'll just, uh, I'm not going to read them, but I will just say the names so that it's on the record who's. Uh, so, uh, Gene and Ken Campbell, uh, they had, uh, our speak in favor of granting the waiver. They had a number of, of positive things, uh, in there. And then the other one was a. Excuse me. Had it all here laid out at one point, uh.
I've seen your office lately, Ross.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Somewhere on the floor.
Yeah, it's, it's blurred. Um, uh, Kay and Ernie Langavon. So again, another, uh, residents that own property on the south side of Van Geesten. Uh, very similar comments to the other one. All spoke in favor of council granting this frontage waiver. Um, and then the lastly, I did have a phone call from a, a Mr. Arntz. He owns property at the corner of Desert View and Deer and was just concerned that this action or the development, uh, would affect his property. And I assured him that the right of way needed to fix Desert View where it's at would not affect his property. So that's, that's the comments. Uh, Stephanie, did you receive any other, uh, public comments?
I did not, no.
Okay. So again, counsel, uh, staffs recommending approval with the two conditions that were noted.
Okay. Thank you, counsel, or thank you, Roscoe. With that, I'll open the public hearing up at seven oh four. If you'd like to provide comment, please raise your virtual hand or star nine by phone. Stephanie, I do not see anybody. Do you?
I do not see Gail's hand up, no.
Okay. Uh, with that, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at seven oh four. Uh, counsel, the resolution eleven twenty-two granting a frontage waiver improvement. Uh, do you have a motion?
I move to approve, I move to pass resolution eleven dash two-two granting a frontage improvement waiver for frontage improvements to Van Geesten SR two twenty-four per West Richland Municipal Code twelve point zero four point zero six zero to the existing building or structure on the property conditioned on the property owner completing a lot combination to combine Benton County parcels. Number one dash three one one zero H three zero three dash zero 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 two dash zero two six. Number one dash three one zero eight three zero three dash zero 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 two dash zero two seven. Number one dash three one zero eight at three zero three dash zero 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 two dash zero three zero. And number one dash three one zero eight dash three zero three dash zero 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 three dash zero one eight into a single parcel prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy and limiting the combined parcel to a single driveway access to Van Geesten with a minimum width of thirty-five feet.
Second. Motion in a second. Any questions, uh, Mr. Slade?
I have.
Blue?
Uh, yes, I, I see the site plan, but are we not going to allow them to have access to Deer or, or, uh, uh, Desert View?
Uh, currently they, they haven't requested, but they could have access to Councilmember Bloom. They just haven't.
Why? I'm, I'm just concerned relative to the, uh, the wording of the resolution or the motion. A single driveway access to Van Geest.
Yeah, it's, it's all pertaining to the Van Geesten. So if they wanted an access off the other streets, they, we could grant on that, but they're, they haven't requested one.
Okay. Um, and I actually went out there with my tape measure and measured, uh, uh, Desert View. I, I, I really questioned if, if, uh, if we've got forty feet of right of way there, but, um, uh, it looks, it, it, it's been encroached pretty badly. Desert View at the far end at, uh, is, is actually only twenty-two feet wide when you turn off of, uh, why do I forget the name of that street out there?
Sixty-second or sixty-second or?
Yeah, sixty-second. Yeah, sixty-second. Uh, all the other ones are twenty-four foot wide. And my, I, I assume you forwarded my, my, your response, my message to all the council members. So they saw it. Um, I guess my, my concern comes down to is, uh, while, you know, I see if we put curb and gutter on those streets down there, basically we eliminate all parked on, all on street parking. And that becomes a significant issue for, uh, Deer Street. I mean, for Desert View for one side of the street. But, uh, not for the commercial side. So I, I guess my, my point was, uh, I have no problem with the current plans, but, uh, I guess I, I really think we need to rethink some of the aspects of, of, uh, how we're going to implement it on these relatively tight, tight right of ways. It's, 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 you know, we can make these places really unlivable. I mean, I've, I've lived in a city where you have basically no parking and that kind of stuff. So, um, that, that was my point of, uh, how do we address these forty? If you say it's a forty foot, I measured closer to thirty-six.
Yeah, there, there is some, uh, Councilmember Bloom, there is some encroachment in different areas, uh, especially Desert View. I think actually council has granted, uh, one of the properties encroachment, encroachment you several years ago. But yeah, when you're dealing with forty foot of ride, road right of way to fit curb gutter sidewalk on that, you're, you're absolutely right. You're down to a twenty-six foot wide roadway that, uh, does not allow for on-street parking. And so currently Deer Street on the north side is, is no parking, this section of Deer and
Right.
Uh, Desert View would also be posted, no parking. So you'll see a, uh, an ordinance in the future that will amend the no parking for this small section. But it will be a challenge in the future. And if the residents come forward with a future LID, then, um, there's, there's different ways you can do it, but if everybody wants a sidewalk on both sides, there's just not enough. And taking, taking additional road right away, most of those homes are pretty close to the road. So it's
From Desert View out to Gross Cup, there being no parking wouldn't be a big deal. It, it doesn't affect many, I mean, the homeowners that were affected are affected. And there really isn't enough, there's encroachment enough, so.
That, that's true, that's true.
It's, it's the curb that will affect other people. That, that was the real crux. We didn't do improvements for, did we waive improvements for the REA installation that along Van Gieson for the, the solar? Or did that meet, not meet our threshold?
I, I'd have to go back and look, Councilmember Bloom, I'm not sure. There's been a number of frontage waivers issued along Van Gieson. But I specifically, I don't know, we're, we're researching that. I think that was a request last month. And so we're staffs going through and putting that list of furniture improvement waivers that have been issued in the past for council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moran.
Thank you, yes. I wanted to just echo what Councilmember Bloom was talking about with that the road and the encroachment, because that is a pretty tight fit there. And wanted to mention, I don't think he mentioned it, but just so that folks are aware that this is just waiving the frontage improvements on Van Gieson, but it is not waiving the frontage improvements on Desert View Driver Deer Street. I don't remember, Mr. Slade, did you mention that?
Yep, that's perfectly clear.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure that that was out there for folks to hear. But yeah, I just, I appreciate the Campbells for emailing me. Thank you very much. Just like was mentioned, please make sure if you are emailing to the council, make sure that you also email Stephanie. I believe the email is cityhall@westrichland.org. Yes, to make sure that they also have that. But if, if I ever get anything like this in the future, I will also forward it to you as well. So I'm glad that that got done, but thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I see nobody else hands up, all in favor, say aye. Polls like Bless you.
Thank you, that was not a nay, that was just a, an aye and no sneeze.
That was a chew, a chew. Okay, moving on to item HC is an ordinance to amend the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two budget. We'll have Aaron Glenn present our staff report this evening here.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Tonight before he was the ninth budget amendment for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two biennial. There are three items in this amendment. The first item has to do with short plating, the three remaining lots the city owns in the Belmont Business District into nine, one to two acre parcels. This amendment includes an appropriation of nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars from the cumulative reserve fund. The amendment would cover costs for short plating, frontage improvement, design and construction costs as well as the appraisals for each of the nine new lots. The second item is for snow equipment in the street fund. The city received funds from the sale of surplus equipment. And this amendment would recognize the three thousand six hundred dollars received in the street fund and increase appropriations for the same amount for a new snowplow to be amounted on a pickup truck. The last item is also for the street fund. Both the Public Works Department and the Police Department have received a few complaints over the last several years regarding the posted speed limit and speeding on Collins Road. Traffic data collected by the Public Works Department on Collins Road warrants a formal engineering analysis of Collins Road. Typically, this type of analysis is completed by the city's engineers on staff. But due to current workload, staff is recommending an engineering consultant be hired to complete an analysis. This amendment increases appropriations by fifteen thousand dollars for consultant analysis and funding for possible implementation of mitigation measures. For the fiscal impact, this amendment authorizes an increase in the twenty-one, twenty-two appropriations in the amount of nine hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred dollars and recognizes an increase in revenues in the amount of three thousand, six hundred dollars, bringing the total revised budget to a hundred and seven million, fifty-four thousand, ninety-five dollars.
Thank you, Aaron. Is there anyone from the audience who'd like to speak to this agenda item this evening? If so, please raise your hand. Stephanie, I see no one. You?
I do not know.
Okay, perfect. Okay, with that, council, may I have a motion, please?
I move to pass ordinance two twenty-two amending the city of West Richland twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two biennial budget.
Second.
Motion in a second, council, questions of Aaron or Mr. Slade? Councilman Bloom?
Slade, I, I forward you an email you sent us back in two thousand and eighteen relative to speeding on Collins. And I, I copied the members of the Finance Committee where we discussed this issue. Your intent on the fifteen thousand dollars, we had a telephone conversation, oh, of the meeting was to look at the speed limit only by the consultant and then use remainder to mitigate it. I guess my, my concern is that, as I expressed my email, my concern is that we're seeing speeds of forty, forty-five miles an hour in a twenty-five mile an hour zone. If, if we were to raise the speed limit, we would, there's no reason we wouldn't see forty and forty-five mile an hour speeds in, in a thirty or even a thirty-five mile an hour zone. So we really should be looking at mitigating the feel of the road. And that was the discussion we had in this budget amendment was to implement mitigating measures. And as I expressed my, this is, doesn't affect the amount. But my advice would be rather than spend money on a consultant evaluating the speed, let's evaluate mitigation and let the let's, let's see if mitigation can reduce the speed and move on from there, because it's obvious we have to reduce. I mean, I can attest that people speed up that hill. And that has nothing to do with being a hill coming down the hill. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Moran?
Thank you. I have comments slash questions about that part of the budget amendment. And I also have questions about the first part. So I just want to make sure I remember correctly. And I did speak with Councilmember Bloom after receiving the packet on this. The amount that we had been told it would likely be for this, if I remember correctly, yeah, well, I remember correctly because I watched the, the video for it, was seven thousand dollars. And the seven thousand dollars is now fifteen thousand dollars. I'm wondering what caused that change?
I, I might ask one question, Councilmember Moran, you said you contacted Councilmember Bloom?
Yes.
Okay, who is on the Finance Committee?
Yes, I guess, yes.
That was, okay, that, I, I don't know what the conversation was in there, but I just want to, want to warn you. If you talk to somebody that's on a, on a committee of three and anything is discussed in regards to that, that's money related, could be a violation of OPMAs, just clarifying that. And then second, the individual which would have been a proper call would have been to Aaron because being her budget amendment, she could explain to you where the funding source changes would have come from. So I remind you, in the, in the future, council members, if you have a question to an item that is on the agenda, please reach out to the director that is presenting the agenda item. So go ahead.
Thank you, I have been properly scolded, apologies. So I, I guess I'm just trying to make sure that I understand the seven thousand turned into fifteen thousand. How that came to be, or maybe just the seven thousand didn't include the entire amount that the fifteen thousand does?
Roscoe, do you want to answer that one?
I was writing down, see if I didn't know if that was in. So just to clarify, so yes, the request was seven thousand dollars for a consultant to do an analysis. But what do you get with analysis? It's going to have some recommendations. What I didn't want to do is have to come back to council and ask for more money for mitigation. So that's why it says on the staff report, the fifteen thousand, seven thousand is for consultant, eight thousand set aside for mitigation measures, which is listed in the staff report. Councilmember Bloom, if I misspoke, we are doing the full study with the consultant with the first thing to verify that posted speed is proper before we look at mitigation measures. So the first step will be to look at the speed limit. If it is twenty-five, then we will look at mitigation measures for twenty-five. If it comes back something different, then we will look at mitigation measures for what that is. But we're not going to assume that the posted speed limit is correct. Part of the analysis is to verify that and determine if things are, need to be changed. But hopefully that answers both questions.
Was in, were you saying in the staff are talking about the front page or is there another, is it part of the tables for the budgeting?
Report.
It wasn't. Oh, that's, I apologize.
It's okay, I understand.
It wa, it was probably in the finance committee.
Yeah, we discussed it in finance committee.
So apologize for that. But yeah, the, the difference is, is the mitigation. I didn't want to come back to council for another budget amendment that Aaron would have to process to then do something.
No worries, understandable. So then I'm also just wondering, for the amount to short plat, that is almost one million dollars. So I'm just curious, is this weighing the differential between whether we, actually, I guess the first question is, are we allowed to waive frontage improvements on property that the city owns?
We're not waving, that's why it's so expensive, is because we are going to do the improvements. We're not waving them.
Right, no, 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 but, but I guess I'm asking first, are we even allowed to?
I don't know, that's Eric and Roscoe.
You could, I just don't see the reason and purpose why we want to here. We're doing it so that we can subdivide the land, create additional lots to sell. Because what we've been seeing, if you remember, people coming in wanting to buy an acre of the lot, not the whole. So it allows us some flexibility in what we can sell and how we're able to sell it. And that frontage improvement will add value back to the property because it's something that they would have had to do if they developed this area, if they purchased the lot and started developing, right? So it's all wrapped up. And then we wanted to do a fresh look at how much the, what the value of the land is so that we're making sure that we're listing it for the correct amount, given the current commercial real estate climate and where the property is located, so.
I, I figured that there was a good reason for it. I really just wanted to make it since it was such a high number that it was out there as to why we wouldn't have done something like waive it, because it sounds like it is better overall to do the improvement now and then sell it for more, that that would provide more to the city rather than selling it as is without the improvements. Is that accurate?
That exactly was our philosophy that recently brought it forth to you, yeah, yeah.
Perfect, I just wanted to have that out there.
We're, we're getting the best bang for our citizens' buck in, in return on investment.
Perfect, excellent.
Your homework.
Perfect.
Excellent, thank you so much, that's all I got.
Councilmember Smart?
Council, Mr. Mayor. So I, I want to just reinforce, I think, part of what Roscoe said there. I think it's important that if we're going to do an analysis on the Collins Road, you know, to have that analysis done professionally and well-reported, because I think that, you know, the speed limit that we post now is twenty-five miles an hour. But it's highly unlikely we can post it to fifteen or something, right? So it's only going to go up or stay the same. If it stays the same, mitigating factors are, or, or I'll be interested to see what sort of mitigating tools we could use to help slow people down, both going up and down the hill. Second, Mr. Bloom's observations of their people, he says forty, I've been thinking fifty at times. I, I see people accelerating down that hill. And you know, the thing is, a bold deference to the West Richland Police Force, you know, there's no place to hide. They, it's a clear shot and down they go. So, and then if the, if the speed limit goes up and we're still going to need some mitigating factor or tools, but they're also going to have some neighbors that are, that are disagreeable to that, I'm sure, because they've been complaining about the high speeds already. So it will be very important that we have a a good thorough professional analysis that's sort of unbiased. And I agree that a, you know, the sort of a third party is a wise way to go. If we, if we did the analysis, we'd get accused of some sort of bias. So, so that's important, I, I agree with that course of action. The price hopefully will be appropriate when the time comes and we decide what needs to be done. Better signs or flashing lights or who knows what. So and as, as far as this, the improvements, my question on the property sub or plot making the, the nine lots or whatever the number was, what's the, what is the price of the, what's the estimated price of just that portion of this, close to a million dollars? So you could either say what you think the improvements might cost or what the plat plating. I'm using the wrong word, what word is it?
Give me a second, Councilmember Smart, and I'll pull it right up for you.
Was that, yeah, you didn't have this breakdown in there. And so I was just curious, like, how much are we paying to? Because the, the cost of, of splitting the parcels is not going to be as recoverable as the price of, you know, the sidewalks and improvements, which I'm, I'm hopeful will be a one for one at least. Maybe it'll be
It'll all fact, it all factors into it, Councilman Smart, so let me
And then I also want to mention, looking at the map, I will just, I, I like the way the parcels have been drawn. I think that seems like a very reasonable looking plan. And I'm generally in favor of, of having smaller parcels available for customers. So I, I think, I think we're making a good decision there.
Yeah, with the smart, smaller parcels that, that gives us the, the ability to maintain the control of the properties as opposed to selling large parcel and then losing the, the backend of it if they want to sell, you know, an acre or two. So, you know, it's, it's been a work in progress, we're learning, but I think it's going to be beneficial. It's all said and done, Roscoe?
Yeah, so, so the, the cost, estimated cost to, to short planet, that's the paper, that's the survey, that's the city's application fees, the title report and staff time processing, you're about just under fifteen thousand, fourteen thousand, nine hundred roughly. The cost associated with the engineering, you've got some geotech, some topo survey, CIPA checklist, the consultant, and then city's time to, to manage and review those things, you're about eighty thousand, one hundred roughly. The construction, so the improvements that you're looking at with the furniture improvements, water extension, irrigation, all that, roughly seven hundred and seventy thousand. And then you've got staff time, material testing, a little over fifty thousand on the construction admin, there's a oh, and ten thousand for appraisals somewhere in there, so I'm not. So it basically is going to take you all the way from beginning to end and including the updated appraisals.
So the one, the one, you know, critique I would, I would say on this action is, well, I'm not sure if it's deep or not, but you know, there's probably an advantage to any single entity to make all of the improvements at one time with a single contractor. But there's a disadvantage in having the city do it and that we have to pay probably a higher contract salary or wages than a private individual might have to do if they were digging. digging trenches and putting in water lines and sidewalks. Is that not correct?
Yep, we pay prevailing wage, but again, this is what this is what we discussed is they're large parcels and if you want to retain control of what businesses are there, then we need to short platter, but you're absolutely spot on, Councilmember Smart.
So I just want to know if you can give me a just a really rough estimate of for the, I think it would just mainly impact. Well, obviously there's staff time, but let's let's cut that out of the equation. Let's just say the improvements part, the seven hundred and seventy thousand. You know, if that were to be done by a private developer versus the city. Do you have an idea of what 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 savings that would then we can, what would we encounter?
But well, the majority of that's probably materials, not labor. But if you, you know, I didn't peel out the labor portion of it, but you're you're you add twenty, twenty five percent on the labor.
Because you're paying. Thirty percent of that cost. It's usually about thirty labor materials and contracting. I don't know, maybe it's only half and half because you've already got. Okay, so so that that tells me that if if half of this cost was labor. We're looking at sixty or eighty thousand dollars in additional costs. If the city does it, these are really rough numbers. I'm sorry, I'm not going to get my calculator out. But somewhere probably around a hundred or less thousand dollars in additional price to get this job done. Versus a single developer, if a developer were coming in and buy all the parcels and do all this at once. So I just want to note that I I don't know that that's realistic or that that would actually happen. You could also have a lot of increase in price for individual mobilizations if 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 each parcel was bought by an individual and they each had to bring in their equipment and so forth. So I I still think it's a good idea, but I just wanted to make sure this critique was aired. So that we understand that that when the city does something like this, it's more expensive. Maybe. In this case, I think I my feel for it is that we're still on the side of economy because I I don't think that eight or nine individuals could get this job done for much less, if at all, than what you're asking for, so. I just want to say that I've thought about that and think there there is a there there, but I think we still, in my opinion, still come down on the side of looking forward with this.
Councilmember Bloom?
Just to piggyback on Mr. Smart's comment, I think it's also we have a tremendous saving in staff time dealing with multiple contractors trying to do all that as well, so. Just.
Good point. Okay, perfect. All right, good discussion, Council. So with that, all in favor, say aye.
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 Propose like sign please. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Council. Okay, so I don't have any unfinished business this evening or new business. So this is the second opportunity for public comment. If you'd like to address Council, please raise your virtual hand or star an eye by phone. I'll be recognized by Stephanie. Name and resident for the record. I see no one. Okay, we'll go ahead and Stephanie, you don't see anybody either, right? Perfect. Thought I'd give you the chance on that one. So we'll move on to staff council announcements and reports and comments. We'll go ahead and start with staff. Anybody has anything from senior staff, raise your hand and I'll recognize you. Roscoe.
Having issues on mute myself. Am I just fighting it? Stephanie, is that what I'm doing? I'm clicking? Yeah, just real quick, I'll Gail, your your question dealing with the water end replacement. Again, sorry you had to sit through the whole council meeting. You can call Public Works anytime if you have questions about projects. I directed staff not to do a piecemeal. You're aware of being as former council member for over twenty years that we budget about a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year for waterline replacement. So this budget for twenty two or twenty one, twenty two has about two hundred and eighty thousand. I directed staff to do all of forty six, Land Arlington and that Fallon in that deal. There is not enough money to do all that. And we're in the process of updating the rate model. Which includes programs. Bottom line is, you know, the the program of putting a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year for waterline replacement isn't keeping up. So we're working with Katie Isaacson to look at that amount, so that'll come up later this year. And come back through council. And we will adjust the funding for that program. You know, like I said, the budget includes two hundred and eighty. The plan is already, it's already been designed. But our engineers' estimates are saying it's going to close, close to eight hundred, and so rather than do a piecemeal, I'll come back and do it all at once. So we're look for that in the twenty three twenty four budget, but looking to construct in twenty three.
Thank you, Roscoe.
And and then, yeah, that was it. Sorry.
Okay, Captain Gregel.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Just wanted to report to everybody that we're getting settled into our new building. I also wanted to give a shout out to the whole city for all their help. I know we could not have done this without them. Operations are going really smooth right now. There's still some work to be done, but at this point in the game, you know, we're pretty settled in. So on behalf of the chief and myself and the team, thank you to everybody. We really appreciate it. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Captain. And Council, comments, reports? Member Smart?
Yes, Council, Mr. Mayor. So just had two comments. One was on this, the funding for the algae bloom study. A related question about that, that doesn't have to be answered tonight, but I I'm wondering if if this was, and I I should just call Roscoe, but I wanted to get that out there because I I wonder if that's, if these algae blooms could impact our aquifer storage reservoir plans. You know, is I'm not sure what Richland did when algae blooms flooded by. But from what I've read, I guess, I guess that they they're they can't bring the water into the city that's contaminated by those blooms? Or does it get treated out? And and anyway, so just, just a question is whether or not that would have any impact on our on our aquifer storage plans.
Roscoe, you can go ahead and give a quick response to that because that is a question that's been asked and been answered. We've discussed it internally, so go ahead and share it.
Yeah, so great question, John, is the, so the city gets about forty percent of our water through that intertie with the city Richland. And so you recall this last summer, you heard about the algae bloom. And they closed the waterfront edge. And it really affected animals. And the concentration was low enough that affected animals, but this is also drinking water. And so they looked, this is mainly Richland, Kennewick, Pasco, because they have the intakes. Working with the Health Department to understand this cyanobacteria. And and understand it, but what was concerning was no state guidance from the Department of Health or EPA, it's unregulated. And so applaud Richland and Kennewick taking the lead with this and partnering with our local health district to get out in front of this. And understand what it is. There's actually some guidance, I think, out of Eugene. There's a water district down there. And so while we don't have an intake on the river, you're you're spot on that because of the volume of water that comes through. We're looking at using this as a water source for that ASR. This this plan will go through and and set up a detection. There's some lab work that will be with the Department of Health that they will do the testing, but an action plan. So if the concentration levels get up to a certain thing, they have an action plan that they're not trying to figure out what to do in the in the middle of summer. And really understand the detection and how this works. I don't want to get in the technical thing, but it's it's not on the top of the river. It's it's laying on the bottom, so it's a little bit different. And like I said, we're going to partner just because of of our ASR and having forty percent, so we'll be doing that and the the action plan will, if something does happen and their treatment plant goes down. What what does that mean for, you know, the cities? What does it mean for West Richland? And so we'll have a plan together if that occurs. They're also looking at treatment to of how to treat this.
Okay. So that's that's important, but I just wanted to bring up two more questions. I don't need. One is, did Kenwick, doesn't Kenwick have an active aquifer storage? So somewhere they're studying.
Yeah, it's it's active, it's permitted, it's complete, and Pasco's in the process of looking at an ASR, so yeah, there there's definitely a lot of interest in this.
Yeah, so the question is, is did they pump Columbia River Water into that while this algae bloom was passing by? And my, the root of my question is, is there a plan to look at the aquifer storage water to see if this bacteria or algae is is still there? And is it capable of growing or flourishing in an underground environment? So.
Yeah, John, it's not getting by their treatment plant, so they're they're taking at the intake out of the river, so it's not getting past that.
Okay, right, so my second comment tonight is that I was looking at the city website, and by the way, that upgrade is great. That really looks good. Appreciate the effort that's gone into that. I I haven't spent a lot of time on the city website, afraid to say. It looks great, but I did test it. Eric, I was looking for a, how do I get a built, how do I do a building permit? And I finally found it. But my suggestion is that we put that in one of the topics in that how how to find things, right? There's a, there's a, there's a higher level menu to, you know, where do I find this? Where do I find that? I would personally like to see you know, the home building permits, if I want to put a shed up or if I want to make a new patio roof or something like that. Should be a little more accessible. I had to dig in like four or five layers to get to that. So and then the last thing I'll say about that, when I was looking at the building permit application. It's a little scary to me because for everything that's outdoor work, it's fine, but the first sentence is that as a city, as a citizen applying for permit, you sign that you authorize employees and officials of the City of West Richland the right to enter and remain on the property in question to determine whether it should be issued. And whether a special condition should be in place, and there's a typo there, by the way. Should be in place or or placed. It says should be placed on a, on any issue permit. So anyway. So besides the small grammatical thing. I mean, if somebody, I just, it's just like, wow. Come on in and stay forever, you know? I know that's not what it means, and I know that's not what you'll do, but I just like things to say what they mean and mean what they say. And this isn't exactly what we mean, I'm sure. So I I would like this to be on the parking lot of infinite number of to do lists to just review this statement and see if we might not be able to make it more reasonable. I mean, really, the right to enter and remain on the property. I mean, come on. I mean, you know, I mean, to the the right to knock on the door and come in and look when I invite you in, absolutely. You know, I don't want to waste your trip. But this just the right to enter, I mean, this doesn't even say a person has to be home, and so many instances, I know that nobody needs to be home.
The whole purpose for that is so if you do get a permit, the building inspector can go and perform an inspection at will. Right? And a lot of that too is if we get called from a neighbor concerned with something that's going on there, we have the ability to go enter the property without having to ask for permission to do so because we've already obtained it through the permit. And make sure that things are safe, and that's our whole purpose behind that is to ensure safety and health and safety.
Yeah, but it's too extreme because included in this permit is interior remodels and alterations. And I'm sorry, but no matter how much I want work done in my house and how much I want my work to be inspected, I don't give permission to anybody to just walk in, come into the property and remain for the duration of their desired stay. I mean, no, come on, well, that's all I'm saying is. That's all. I'll leave it at that. But I I did, I do like the website. It looks great. It's very sharp. And I'm sure we'll have other mods in the future, but I appreciate the the effort that cities put into that, so. That's my comment. Thank you.
Councilmember Moran?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to mention that the irrigation districts are going to be starting to fill and flush the canals within the next month or so. I believe that the Columbia Irrigation District is going to be sometime around March twenty second, so I just hope folks are aware of that. And also this coming Friday, the Benton Franklin Council of Governments Board election is going to happen. The nominating committee has nominated Commissioner Peck of Franklin County, the president, and Councilmember Luxon from Richland as the vice president. That meeting will happen ten AM on Friday. You can join it on Zoom online or with your phone, and if you go to www.bfcog.us you can get the link for that. Another thing that we're going to do is we've got a tip amendment that we're going to be looking to approve. And whether or not we approve a resolution to support the State Department of Transportation targets for pardon, for safety performance measures. And that's all I got. Oh, and we had a really good meeting for the subcommittee today, so thank you very much, Mr. Minn Hall for that. Thank you.
Councilmember Bloom?
Well, lectures were made for the chairman of the Ben Franklin Transit Board, and if be not me. I came in second. I'm now vice chairman of the Ben Franklin Transit Board, which leaves a lot of stress. Commissioner McKay will be chairman. The for those of you that are, we have approved Navy those that may have visited the S one W prototype in Idaho. It is being turned over to environmental management for demolition. It's being deactivated. So S one W was one of the first naval nuclear types built. And goes the way of the rest of a lot of the fleet that's out there at Hanford. Speaking of Hanford, the Hanford Advisory Board is in a state of total disarray. It appears that the Department of Energy is trying to manipulate membership to an nth degree, which will basically, come July, we will have no approved membership in the Hanford Advisory Board because they will not, they do not project that they will approve memberships until October. And my membership ends in the end of June. So we're meeting tomorrow in the executive board to discuss possible solutions, but Ms. Hayes, you've submitted your paperwork, I assume. I've submitted mine.
Yeah. Yes.
Black hole called DOE. So you you will not have any responsibilities for a long, long time.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Bloom. Councilmember Hayes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With the Hanford communities, there is going to be a roundtable with Ike White, DOE Senior Advisor for Environmental Management on Wednesday, February twenty third. And I I it's just been really interesting. I'm thankful I was put on this this committee. Just the knowledge and stuff that I'm I'm learning about the Hanford side and and to bring back to, you know, the community and everything, I think it's going to be great. I know there's a lot of changes going on there, but I think there's there's just a lot of positive in what the Hanford side has brought to this region as a whole. And so I look forward to continuing and working with David and and working on that committee to really see. and, and working on that committee to really see what it's all about. So I'm thankful that I'm on that committee and it's been very interesting, I just want to say, sitting on the financial committee, Aaron, you do an amazing job, I don't know how you keep track of everything, but it's, it's, it's amazing what city staff, what you guys do and what we're able to accomplish and with this city and where we're headed and I just see so much positive. And I'm just, I'm grateful, I'm grateful I got on city council, I'm grateful for the committees that I am sitting on and I hope to bring forward a lot of positive information to the community. So I just wanted to share that, those are the two committees that, that as of right now that I've really enjoyed sitting on and being part of and, and so wanted to share that. And the other exciting news that I wanted to share is that the West Richland Chamber has partnered with the Red Mountain Event Center and we will host the first annual Speed Fest Show and Shine for twenty twenty-two in West Richland, so what's that mean to our community? It means we're bringing Cool Desert Nights to West Richland, we already have Hogs and Dogs in West Richland. And so we're going to be hosting it June twenty-third through June twenty-fifth at the Red Mountain Event Center. And I think it's some really exciting news for not only all of our residents, but our businesses, the amount of people that are going to be coming to town, purchasing stuff in the restaurants, stores, everything and getting gas here. It's, it's going to be a great event that will continue and just build. So being out at the raceway, it's an amazing place, I never realized till I went and visited it several times now, just how big that is, you know, so. And they have an apple cup coming up in April there at the raceway. So it's just, there's so many events and excitement happening here in this region, the whole region. And it's so exciting to see West Richland is one of the key players now. So there'll be more news coming out, we just started releasing the news today and will continue releasing it. And it's, I'm just really thankful for the sponsors that we've had with Cool Desert Nights and Hogs and Dogs and our premier sponsor IBW, I met with them on Monday and they will continue to stand by our side as a premier sponsor for Speed Fest. And so for the next two years, they're committed, so that's great news for both Red Mountain Event Center and the West Richland Chamber. So and just stay tuned because a lot of exciting stuff's going to be happening and our town's going to be part of it, so thank you.
Like I say, more to come.
More to come, yeah.
Councilmember Fettle?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, just two quick comments. While we're doing the meeting, my phone started blowing up a little bit, Richland School District has closed all schools tomorrow. So if you have a child in the school district, there is no school tomorrow. I guess, well, you can read the story if I know why.
I'll give you more update on that here in just a second.
And then second, I'm having surgery on my knee on Monday, the twenty-eighth, so I may or may not be on the meeting on the first, if I am, I'll be in bed and so don't make fun of my hair.
As long as you're not on pain pills, you say funny things on pain pills. Okay, perfect, all right, thanks, David, best of luck on that knee. So yeah, as David mentioned, earlier today, there was a, an executive session held with the Richland School District. Everybody not knowing what was discussed in that, they came out of the executive session and then proceeded to go into a workshop. During the workshop setting, there was a motion made by a board member to disregard the mandate and go to a, they call it face covering optional for this Richland School District. It was seconded and passed three to two, there were some absent members that spurred a quick discussion with the administration, the state. The, basically, they, they violated the, the, the rule of creating a agenda item and a, and a, a the word I'm looking for, excuse me, it's late and I'm tired. They, they voted on an item that wasn't on an, on an agenda during a regular meeting. So basically mad on them, so in order to not be non-compliant with state law, there, it says right here, I got the email, it says during a special meeting of the Richland School Board members voted three to two to make the wearing of face coverings in the district schools and facilities optional. All Richland School District's schools and facilities are in emergency closure for Wednesday, February sixteenth to plan a path forward, no student transportation will be provided, including Delta High School or Tri-Tech Centers. So they've got a, basically, I think they're probably going to be, I talked with one of the board members and it sounds like they're going to be shut down until the board comes back and, and reverses their decision and be compliant with state law. So sad deal, bad deal. I appreciate council for being patient as we work through the governor's emergency order while we get our, our equipment in, in line and then functional to be able to have virtual meetings, or excuse me. What's the word, Stephanie? Hybrid, hybrid. Yeah, I have that hybrid meeting, I appreciate everybody's patience and understanding that we all raised our hand and took oath office, whether we like it or not, we support the, the laws of the state and the costs and things in that nature. So bad deal, but it is what it is, so we got kids at home tomorrow and for the future, until they get it fixed. So with that, we'll call it a night and good conversation, a lot of good information from, from the county with, with Matt and his, and his team there, so I'm looking forward to that in the future. So we'll have more information as it comes. Okay, we're done tonight, seven fifty-seven, we're out.